Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting of November 13th. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Shrewsbury Media Connection through the work of John McDonald, and it will be rebroadcast between now and our next meeting on December 4th. First on our agenda is public participation. No one has asked to speak this evening, but if anyone wishes to do so in the future, please contact the school committee. Next is chairperson and members' report. Does anybody have anything? Jason?
I've been asked to make an announcement on behalf of the Shrewsbury Coalition for Addiction Prevention or Escape. They are going to be hosting a nationally renowned guest speaker at the high school on Thursday, November 21st. Dr. Ruth Potey will be speaking about what families and teens should know about the science of teen brain development, which includes alcohol vaping and substance use. The presentation is free and open to the public. Parents are encouraged to attend with their students. It's going to take place at Shrewsbury High School in the auditorium on Thursday, November 21st at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. I would like to announce an award that Mr. Pallach recently received on November 7th. It was from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees at their annual conference, and he received the Division Four All-State School Committee Award. The All-State Committee is established to annually recognize significant achievement on the part of local school committee members. This recognition is intended to honor school committee members who during the previous year have made a significant contribution to their community or their school committee, either through specific action or as an inspiration and role model for their peers and constituents. So congratulations, Jason. I think you may be the first one that I even know about receiving from Shrewsbury looking way back.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
Didn't check.
Well, congratulations. We're very happy. Thank you. Dr. Soria?
Let me have my congratulations to Mr. Pallach. Also want to thank all of the parents in the community who came out. Yesterday was our annual parent conference day. Our educators and all the way through grade eight worked very hard to prepare for those. It's a long day of meeting with parents and making sure we're communicating effectively around their children's progress. For the high school level and for some of our specialty departments, it's a professional development day. I had the opportunity to be present for a short period of time at the high school. Yesterday they had a trainer from a national organization called Character Strong, which does work around social emotional learning, working with the high school faculty on how to build stronger relationships with students and continue to build on the positive culture that was there. And I know that a couple things, takeaways I had in the brief time I was there is that certainly it's relationships that matter when it comes to building a strong culture with students. And this isn't about the fact that you have to be bad to get better. We have a very strong culture at Shrewsbury High School, and it pleases me that Mr. Zidlow and the leadership team there are working to try to find ways to make it even stronger over time. So I was pleased to be part of that training session for a little bit. Another event, we actually have back-to-back weeks with outstanding national-level speakers. This one is actually tomorrow evening, November 14th, at 7:00 PM at Shrewsbury High School. Kathy Vatterott, who is a national expert on the topic of homework, will share information about the research on homework around different ways districts around the country are addressing homework in terms of making it as effective as possible. She will be speaking at 7:00 PM tomorrow evening in the Shrewsbury High School Auditorium. That is sponsored by our Colonial Fund, and we're hoping that we have lots of families and educators who join us for that. And I would also highly recommend that people attend the following week, Dr. Ruth Potey's presentation that Mr. Pallach just mentioned on addiction and the teenage brain. That is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. Our first time schedule appointment is student recognition, and we are recognizing the Shrewsbury High School girls and boys crew state champions. And I'll ask Mr. Costa, he is our director of athletics at Shrewsbury High School, along with the captains to come forward.
While they're doing this, Fritz, is it okay if I talk about the accomplishments while they're getting set up? We're very pleased that Shrewsbury High School is again state champions in another athletic event. In this case, it was the fall rowing season. During their season, at the Fall Championships on October 27th in Lowell on the Merrimack River, the overall, the boys and girls teams combined were the overall winning team, champion team, which was the Richard Stavros Award. The girls' eights won the Russ Kraus Award. Russ Kraus, a former Shrewsbury crew coach, a long time. The boys' eights won the Pamela Kraus Award, who was also a longtime Shrewsbury crew coach. And the boys' varsity aid won their single individual championship as well. And so we're asking that the captains, who have some pretty neat hardware there that they put on the table in front of them, that's hard to beat, will talk a little bit about their experience this season. We have obviously a lot of the members of the team were able to join us tonight, and the coaches. The coaches this year, Chris Noble's the head coach of the boys' team, along with Garav Shashindar is the assistant coach of the boys' team. Matt Hastings is the head coach for the girls' team, and Hannah Rooney is the assistant coach, and Ed McGuinn is the novice coach. And so congratulations to the players and the coaches, and I'll turn it over maybe to Mr. Costa for a brief introduction, and then the captains introduce themselves and make a few comments.
Yeah, just to say thank you for having us. Nice yearly visit for us. But I just wanted to say, you know, congratulations to our captains, who started back in the summer, where they were working hard in the offseason training, I think competing with the football team for the weight room and winning that battle, and getting ready for this season. And it was a tough season with all the restrictions that we had with Triple E and being confined to certain restrictions as far as practices go and how we operated. And I just wanted to say congratulations to our captains, especially for the hard work and leadership that they have done this season, and they continue to do. I don't think they've stopped since winning the state championship. They're again working their way into the weight room this offseason and getting ready for the spring season. So I don't want to steal that down there and allow them to introduce themselves and talk about the experience. I'm just gonna put these down here for them, so that you can see their faces.
I'm Gavin Crouch. I'm a senior and a captain of the Shrewsbury Boys Crew Team. I've been rowing for eight seasons at the high school. Yeah.
I'm Willie Yankee. I'm also a senior, and I've also rowed for eight seasons at the high school.
Yeah, Natalie Seiwick. I'm also a senior. I've also rowed for eight seasons. And I would just like to say how proud I am of our team this year and the great depth we showed from the first boat all the way down to the fifth boat. Because if anybody gave up a single stroke during that race two, three weekends ago, we wouldn't have walked away with the results we did. And it was because of just the hard work and grit of every single person on our team that we were able to do what we did.
I'm Caitlin Urbannick. I'm also captain on the girls' crew team, and I've been rowing for eight seasons at the high school.
So like personally, for this fall season, I thought this was the best season of crew I've ever had. And also, it's not just how well we did as a team, but also the weather was really nice for the majority of it, which is not very common. It's usually very rainy, very cold, very dark outside. But this was like a nice season to row. It was enjoyable.
Yeah, it was one of our best seasons we've had, as with the guys' team, but also one of the hardest training we've ever done. We started in the summer, rowing as much as we possibly could, and running at Dean Park in bright dawn. And then right as season started, we stepped on the gas pedal and never let off until the state championship.
This year, we actually went to the Head of the Charles, which is something that we haven't done in five years?
Yeah.
Five years. And ours, like how we did compared to how we did last time and how we've always done there is exponentially better. We got 29th place out of like 84 boats.
Yep.
Last, like last time we were there, it was like 80th?
Yeah. Yeah, we barely could get out of the 70s, 80s. But yeah, to make it 30th now and beating some, almost pretty sure all the public schools in Massachusetts, some of the private schools.
Clubs from all around the United States.
And racing against like national teams from Great Britain was pretty cool, and like teams from like Washington, Oregon, and California, and placed pretty well there. I couldn't be more proud. Do you guys want to go?
Well, so on the girls' side, definitely we had some bright things about our Head of the Charles race. But going away from that, we knew that our season wasn't over quite yet, and we still had things in mind that we wanted to improve upon. And at the Massachusetts Fall Public Regatta, we were actually able to close time gaps in every single boat that we did race ahead of the Charles. So we were really proud of, like we were like, we have one week left. Like we aren't just going to let that week go to waste. And we used every bit of time just to train and keep getting better throughout the season.
Yeah. And it's really awesome to see just the dedication of all the girls on our team. Like even after the season has stopped, we're currently in the middle of our like winter erging challenge. And there's girls that we've already had racked up so many meters, even though the season's only been over for like a few weeks. So it's really great to see that from everyone, because even though we just had a successful fall season, we're ready to go for the spring, because that's the season that is really our racing season. So I think that with the work that everyone's putting in, we're really looking forward to it. And I know that it's going to be a really good season for all of us, especially since it'll be our last season rowing at Shrewsbury High School.
Kristen, can you tell people who are watching, you don't know what an erg is, what erging is?
So an erg is basically a rowing machine for, as a training tool. And it's no different than like a treadmill for running. It's kind of, you just do the same motion on the machine as you would in the boat. It's like a few differences, but for the most part, that's what we use to train in the offseason when we can't get out on the water or the lake's frozen or something like that. So.
Yeah, to add on with that, we've already started today, actually. We did, me and a couple of the guys did 13K on the erg, which is around seven-ish miles. So yeah, we're already getting started for spring season now. And yeah.
Just for people at home to understand too, is as a public school, it's very tough competing in the competition that they go against, because they're going against a lot of prep schools. So some of the students are older that are competing at that level, have the different type of financial backing for their programs. And you know, I'd like to, you know, talk about our coaching staff, our coaching staff has done an amazing job co-chasing Coach Noble and their staffs of really getting the culture of the program. We use that. It's funny, when I have my coaches' meetings, I've kind of used a lot of their model to try to get the whole entire athletic program to follow the culture of the boys' and girls' crew programs. The other thing is, I'd like to definitely thank, you know, the Friends of Shrewsbury Crew for all the work that they do and the tireless fundraising and working with the Boosters Association to give the athletes the materials they need to be successful. I think that has made a big difference of them being able to compete, having the up-to-date boats and equipment that they need. So I'd like to thank everyone there for helping with the success of the season.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments? But thank you very much. I think it's another group that we look at, again, state champions. We're very fortunate as a school, but it's, rowing is not easy. My son did that way back. And when you mentioned erg, I mean, he had another name for the erg machine, and I can't say it in public. It's a hard, it's a hard sport. And when you mentioned weather, it's usually raining some during those races. You're on the water and you can't get off. You can't go to your car and warm up or something during. So congratulations. I think it's, we're always proud of what our students do. But again, state champions, a great honor. I'm just curious, anybody thinking of rowing in college?
Yeah. We're, Caitlin, myself, and Natalie are all being recruited at D1 level. So.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you. And before I ask a couple of questions, why don't you guys hit those trophies now, because I'm worried they can't see your faces on TV. I just want to make sure if your parents are watching at home or you're at home. So can you tell, you mentioned about the weather, and can you talk a little bit more about the championship race and what the conditions were like that day and the challenges relative to conditions current, all the kinds of things, and what goes into, what sort of makes rowing a different sport depending on the conditions?
It was terrible.
It was raining.
It was about 35 degrees, I would say. There was wind. There was rain.
Brutal, yeah, brutal headwind. So the boat wasn't really moving that quick. But um, yeah.
When you're out on the water, it's, you can't really wear like a lot of clothing, because your body's going to get like really hot really fast. So you'll be heating up, and then once you're done, you'll be even more cold, because your body's just not used to that temperature. So I think like half of like the difficulty about it is just trying to like stay like mentally there, because of how difficult it can be on the water, especially with really awful conditions.
Yeah. Not only that, but we lost our bucket that held our shoes. So we had to walk up the boat barefooted with wet socks on. So I wouldn't, yeah. And all of our jackets were wet from being in the rain. So yeah, it was terrible. The results came out pretty well, though. So I think that's all that really matters.
We did good.
I mean, as Will said, like we had just the most beautiful season, like the whole entire season. And then the last race was just like, it was just like the winter or like fall started to just like hit that rainy like coldness. And I think that like everyone pretty much handled the conditions really well, even though like people were out there in like their unis and like it was raining and cold. Like everybody still like didn't let the conditions affect how they performed. So I thought that was really awesome.
Well, and that definitely like shows just how resilient of a team we were, because every team was faced with the same weather conditions. And we could have easily just said, ah, you know, it's the last race. Like, it's fine. Whatever happens is whatever happens. But everybody pushed through, and I'm really proud that we were able to block out the weather and focus on our boat and our race.
Along those lines, can you guys also talk a little bit about the culture of the program? And this is obviously, you see behind people watching, there's lots of athletes on these teams. We have two very large teams. It's a very popular sport. So despite the fact that it's very challenging and physically challenging, yet it seems to be a very positive culture. Maybe you can talk a little bit about the culture of the teams.
So this program's, I think, the second oldest athletic program at the high school, started in the 1930s by Ken Burns. So we have this sort of long history of being a very excellent team, very well-established team, especially in the state and throughout the region. So there is that sort of responsibility of keeping up this sort of image and tradition. I feel like every year, the team is surpassing those expectations. We're all extremely nice to each other. We help each other out regardless of what we're doing. We're competitive between each other, but not in the sense of where it's kind of like a dangerous competition. It's friendly competition, which is something that's very essential to having an entire group of people move a boat.
Yeah, when you're in a boat with nine other guys, you're all pushing for each other. We're all just all brothers, everyone on the team. Every erg that we do, we do them together, and we're all going through the same pain. But no one's giving up, and they're all pushing for each other. So that's, I mean, that's all you could ask for for a team culture, is everyone's togetherness of the team. And I think that's all the crew is about and what we try and bring every day.
Yeah. And I think that the, just like the hardships of the sport really is what bring us together. So even just like spending as much time as we do with our teammates, because we do practice like a lot more than like a lot of other teams. We practice every day after school for, from like 2:30 to around 6 o'clock. So it really just like, we're spending a lot of time together. We're putting in all the work together. And I think that as a team, like we have to like, it's, we have to be good teammates to one another because we spend so much time to each other. So I think that it's really important and it's really awesome to see like just the culture of this team. Like even from the moment that I stepped on this team as a freshman, there's been this culture of, oh, it doesn't matter if you're a novice on the team, or if you're on JV or varsity, or like everyone's just like, like one team, and we're all like friends and we're nice to each other, and we treat each other the same. We have the same pasta parties and everything. So it's just awesome to be a part of this team. And I felt welcome from the moment I was a freshman. So as a senior captain now, that's like how I want all the freshmen to feel when they're coming on the team.
Yeah. And the reason why we're able to have that amazing culture is because all 50 girls and 50 guys from first boat down to our novice boat have the same practices, have the same races, have the same pasta parties. We do not have a single practice or race that is away from the rest of the team, where we say, oh, we are only inviting this like portion. Like everybody is with each other all the time. And that just creates such an amazing environment and bond throughout everyone on the team.
Well, I appreciate that. It really came through. I had the chance to be at the championship race, and the conditions were absolutely miserable for spectators as well. But to see you persevere, and I think the fact that it's an overall, not only did individual boats win, but the overall team and the fact that what you just described, and to have really literally 100 of the athletes in every single boat counting towards that overall championship is something that you can be very proud of, and we certainly are proud of as a community. So we want to thank you for that. At this point, since there's so many of you, we're going to have the captains come up and get some certificates on behalf of the team for each of the championships you won at the Fall Championship Races. And again, I also want to add my thanks to the coaches, to Mr. Costa, and to the Friends of Shrewsbury rowing, and the fact that they've been able to do the fundraising and of course the production that every race is in terms of the food that they provide, that people voluntarily bring and set up down at the boathouse. And of course, we're very, very fortunate having, you know, being located on Lake Quinzigman, having access to the Dunnehue Rowing Center. It's something a lot of public high schools don't have, that kind of opportunity. So it's something that we're very pleased that we're able to provide, and that so many of our student athletes are able to take advantage of that. So congratulations to everyone on the team and throughout the program. And if the captains come up and shake the committee's hand, and congratulations to everyone again.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Gavin. Can you just spread these out to the coaches?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Will. Good work. Congratulations, Natalie. Awesome job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You got this, too.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And don't forget your trophies, or we'll keep them.
All right. And so you have a choice now. You can stay for Mr. Zidlow and Ms. Wen's presentation on test scores, or you can go all the way.
Yep, there you go.
Guess we know where they stand.
Okay, next on our agenda, we are going to have a annual report on the Shrewsbury High School testing results. And Mr. Chavis Zidlow, principal of the high school, and Ms. Nowen, director of school counseling.
Well, good evening. And thanks for having us tonight. It's a tough act to follow, but we do have good news to report around our standardized testing and what we did during the 2019 school year. Mrs. Wen and I have kind of gone through the standardized metrics, had conversations about it, and we're happy to present what we've found for results. And it's typically our annual event to kind of showcase some of the, and highlight some of the good work that our students have done over the course of the year. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Wen.
So just to give an overview of the standardized testing that we have at the high school, we have the SATs and the ACTs. And either one of those exams are usually required for college admissions, although we are seeing more and more colleges keep adding to their admission standards as having exams as optional. The subject tests are specific subjects through the college board. And typically, in the country, it's only required about 45 to 50 colleges. It changes a little bit from year to year, depending on the schools and depending on the specific subject areas. And then the PSAT, NMSQT, and the plan of the both are practice SAT and practice ACT exams. And finally, we have the advanced placement exams, where students can earn either college credit or placement when they get to college, depending on their score. So just, this gives a little recap about the change that we've had in the past few years with the college board in terms of the test administrations. This is our third year since the revision of the SAT with the college board. And the tests include the evidence-based reading and writing and the math scores. What they have done recently also is that they have added the summer test dates for both the SAT and the ACT. These both seem to be competing with each other in terms of changing how they do things. With the PSAT, as of last year and this year, they really, we always have, we always have the SAT date on the Saturday date, which used to be standard, but it is now an optional test date. The college board is making a big push to try to have a lot of testing during the school day. So right now, Wednesday's the main test date. Saturday, which is what we do, is an optional test date. And then changes in the AP administration for this school year, the college board has undergone quite a bit of changes in terms of the registration process. What they have done this year is that they're requiring students to register for the test quite early. We have to order the tests by actually this Friday, November 15th, which used to be a February date, where students had more time to make some of those decisions, especially come up with the money for the exams, especially for students taking multiple exams. So they've really pushed the whole registration process quite early in the year. And then they're also adding in large late fees or extension fees for different things. So it's definitely much more of a process for us this year, because it's their first year going to this procedure. They're, it's, how do I explain it? They are kind of building it as they go a little bit. So we're still getting information right up into the deadline about what is possible, what's not possible within the registration. So that's been a little bit frustrating with some of those changes. I'm sure they'll work out their kinks after the first year, hopefully. In terms of the score reporting changes, the biggest change, and this started last year with the college board, we still get our cohort scores for the class of 2019, but for the state and the national, they are reporting by the but for the state and the national, they are reporting by the year. So, instead of the cohort year of graduation of 2019, they take the average of test scores for 18, 19, whether it's juniors, seniors, or whoever's taking the test. So their reporting has become different as well. So in terms of the redesigned SAT scales, we are looking at the, just the evidence-based reading and writing on a score of 200 to 800. Math is 200 to 800, it was just typical before. They've eliminated the writing as part of that. And so we look at both the individual scores and also together in the 1600 scale. So as you can see in this chart, the past three years has been the new revised exams. And our scores continue to rise, but still fluctuate a little bit. But it stayed within the range of the early 1200s. And then the state and the national scores dipped very, very slightly, but we are still well above both the state and the national.
Sure, when we take a look at, when we disaggregate the data, we look at gender in particular. And as you can see, females outperform males in the evidence-based reading and writing, 602 to 586. And then in math, as you can see in the light blue, average score 624 for males and 611 for females.
When we look at the subject tests, there are specific subjects that the students can take in different areas. These are the tests that our students have taken. And you can see the number of students who actually take the tests and the actual average of the scores that's there. And overall, our students do pretty well. They score at least a 650 or higher in most of the, most of the subject tests. So with the PSAT, that is the practice test that we offer. The PSAT, the NMSQT, is the scholarship part of the program, where juniors who take the test can qualify for the National Merit Scholarship. So you can see in 2019, we had 24 commended students, and four students who became finalists, and we have one scholarship recipient. And if you look at the list of commended students, that's usually the top 2% scoring in the nation and the top 1% of the finalists. Now with the ACTs, which is the other exam, there is also a little difference this year in terms of the students that have taken the test. We see a dip in the number of students taking it. While there is a little dip in the number of students taking the exam, the scores have gone up. One of the things that I kind of attribute this to is that the, with all of the changes the past three years with the college board and the SATs, I think they've done great marketing, a lot of changes in terms of how they've rolled out the program. They've also partnered with Khan Academy, which has given free access to students for test prep. So they've done a lot of different incentives for students. One of their new campaigns is for students and schools to sign up to pledge to take the test. So there's definitely a big marketing campaign with all the changes that they've had over the past three years.
One of the other programs that we have at the high school that you've probably heard about is our advanced placement program, where students can participate in advanced coursework at the high school and potentially get college credit based upon if they score a 3 or higher on the exam. The exams range from 1 to 5, so a 3 or higher could qualify students for credit. We've had a number of students who've utilized this opportunity and actually have resulted in finishing school up to a semester early, or taking that one course and parents allowing them to stay on campus for their senior year. So we save, students can save a little bit of money on the back end of this. In terms of participation, 98% of students who participated in the exams at Shrewsbury High School were in the 11th and 12th grade. 54% in the 12th grade and 44% in the 11th grade. And we've had a few students who have self-studied, not taken a course at the high school, but yet enrolled to take an exam through some sort of outside entity. When I arrived 15 years ago in Shrewsbury, I think we might have had 150 exams, SAT, AP exams administered, approximately. This year, we hit our all-time high of 884 administered. And as you can see, we had 416 participants taking the 884 exam. So again, that's up by 32 students, and also up by 119 exams from the previous year. Some of this is probably attributed to a little bit of the college mania. Like we have to take AP, there's this urban legend that you have to take APs in order to get college admission, which is not necessarily the case. But I do think the number of families do subscribe to that and believe that they're going to get a leg up. So we certainly have increased the number of exams and people participating in that program. Our scores are probably some of the best in the state, and if not the nation. Where we're looking at our lowest score, average score is a 3.2, rather, 3.6. And all these scores are passing scores and would qualify for college credit for those colleges and universities that accept that. We've had some really, really fantastic results, and I think that's attributed to outstanding instructional practice, collaboration, and training that our teachers go through, and the work they do together. We've had more teams of teachers working around advanced placement curriculum than we had in the past, and I think it's evident by the scores and expectations they have for our students. When we opened this up, I forget what year it was, Dr. Sawyer might remember, but we eliminated prerequisite requirements for entrance into AP exams. And there was a feeling that our AP scores were going to fall off a cliff as a result. And actually, they dipped a little bit and then remained relatively steady, and we're continuing to see that. We've increased access to exams, and as you saw, we had 884 with 416 students taking those exams. Our scores remain pretty steady and static. And again, I think that's attributed to really good class size, a really good, the support of the school committee and support of department directors around the training and the work that the teachers do in the class, and really some, let's face it, hard work from students and the support of families in our community. So, kudos to everyone there, it's a good news story for our performance there. Another interesting number that you'll see within your report, which is much more voluminous than what the audience is seeing, is the number of students who participate nationally versus SHS in one AP exam. As you see, we're lower than the national average for one AP exam. But as you move down, the numbers of 2 and 3 exams given by a student jumps to 31%, and 4+ is over 43%, where the national average is only 9%. So we're kind of inverse pyramid of that. Again, I think it speaks to rigor and people trying to take the most rigorous course offerings we have at the high school. Last but certainly not least, again, we set another record this year with the number of, total number of AP scholars. In advanced, the college board will give distinction to AP scholar-based, AP scholars depending on the number of exams they take and their average score. So for instance, the AP scholar, they need to take a minimum of 3 exams and score a minimum of an average of 3 in all exams. For AP scholar with honors, they have to score a minimum of an average of 3.25 on their exams. In a 3, a minimum of 3 on 4 exams. AP scholar with distinction is 3.5 on the exams average, and 3 on 5 exams. And then the AP national scholar, and this is pretty intense here. So, an average score of 4 on their exams, and 4 or higher on 8 or more AP exams. That's a lot of time. So, this year we had 172 AP scholars. So congratulations to those 172 people. And again, thanks to our families for their support. That's not done without a lot of time, energy, and effort. So, kudos to them.
One of the things that we send to our colleges when students are applying to colleges is our school profile. Within our school profile, we have our community demographics, our graduation requirements, our course levels, the GPA scale, AP, SAT average scores, future plans of our graduating class from the prior year. A lot of this information helps colleges to kind of get a snapshot of what Shrewsbury High School is all about, what the students are about, and how we grade students and how well our students do.
So as we look forward, excuse me, we talk about what we can do to help students. We've continued to offer our own test, in-house test prep program, which is over 50% less of cost than you'll find anywhere out there. Probably more upwards of 60 or 70% off the national branded test preps. And what we do with the results when they come in, department directors in English and Mathematics, look at those with Mrs. Monopoly, who's our assistant principal responsible for the assessment piece. And they disaggregate that data, look at responses, then try and make adjustments according to not only our curricular offerings, but also our SAT prep courses. We offer the PSAT to all sophomores and juniors. And as you can see by that chart, the number of students that have participated, and the number of fee waivers for juniors in the bottom column on the right. Again, maintaining, one of the things that we look to do is maintain and improve our scores. I think Dr. Sawyer said it in our training the other day around our social emotional stuff. You don't have to be bad to get better. So we continue to use that mantra with a growth mindset. And again, look at data through our advanced placement scores, and then share those with directors, individual student scores as well. And then take a look at what we can do to continue to improve our instruction, to improve outcomes. The other thing that we look to do, have looked to do, is expand opportunities for all students and offer a variety of courses. One of the big things that we talked about and will continue to talk about, and you've heard this before, is space considerations. We currently are using the fieldhouse because it's not a venue in the town that can support the number of students taking tests. And we've used every possible venue and worked with everyone in town to try and find a good space for us to take these exams off-campus. And we did for a number of years, but we had to bring them back just because no one can accommodate the sheer volume of one test and the volume of students to have the appropriate spacing. So, thank you to the PE department, who essentially, we rally up in the auditorium, and then we, hopefully, it doesn't rain the first two weeks of May, and we head outside for our PE classes, while our fieldhouse is actually set up using a rental of tables and chairs, and we set up a testing center there. And we use a dance studio as well. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Lindsay?
I just want to really applaud the, all of the department at the high school for the amount of work that goes into both pulling this together, but also pulling it off, right? I think the AP scores in particular are so notable given how much higher our results are across a wide variety of subjects, right? And with a, and not with necessarily a small number of students taking it. You know, with 51 students taking the chemistry exam and being well north of 1 point higher than the Massachusetts average. So clearly some wonderful results, and running across so many different disciplines, right? You see it in foreign language and in some of the sciences. So it's just very, very impressive. Cognizant of all of our space concerns that we were talking about just a couple meetings ago as well, is it, given the high interest in the number of students taking these, is the, do we have it sort of as like a policy? Or is it by design that students in 10th grade don't enroll in AP courses? Or is it a prerequisite, you need to get certain things done so those just opportunities don't develop? And is that kind of standard compared to some of our peer communities? Where we wouldn't see 10th graders in that?
Yeah, sure. So I think two things, we're intentional about that. The college board does not recommend students in 10th grade to take those, 9th and 10th grade. There are schools and communities that support that. I think what we try and find is try and strike a balance between that. I do think there's a little bit of college admissions mania around this. So, I think that everyone wants to take that and believes they need to take that to get a leg up. I think what we try and, and I know Mrs. Wen, her department talks about this, is finding the right fit for college. Many people aspire to go to an Ivy League school or a NSCAC school, and that might not be the right fit for them. I think when we try and tell families and parents, visit campuses, see if the people are like, are like you, have similar values to you, and then have programming that matches your interests and a variety of programming, versus don't get stuck on a name brand, per se. I use the example of one of my college roommates who was a PE major from a state college, who was wildly successful and retired as working in the IT industry with no training. So, that adage of where you go to college isn't who you're going to be is certainly pertains to his circumstance. And I think it's hard for parents and students to understand that because they're, they hear the messages from the community and colleges and everyone, they're friends, and all those things happening. So, yeah, certainly, it's intentional, your question about the 9th and 10th, it's intentional. And I think trying to reduce the amount of stress with not having students take more than 2 or 3 APs per year.
Understood. Thank you. That's helpful.
So spectacular results. I'm wondering if we have the capacity to stratify by race, ethnicity, free or reduced lunch, any measures of socioeconomic status?
Yeah, I haven't, I, we do, I just haven't, I don't have, I don't have those numbers. But we certainly can do that.
Okay.
Through the college board, sure. And we can certainly look at that for this report and future reports as well.
Is that self-reported by the students in terms of those kinds of statistics, in terms of what the college board would provide us? Or do we have to connect it to our own statistics in order to do that kind of disaggregation?
The college board does disaggregate, but it is student-reported.
Right.
So the students are reporting in a pre-information session before they take any exam. And that's how that's recorded. So occasionally, we will have the student that does not have, they don't identify any ethnicity. Occasionally, I'll see in the statistics, they don't identify with either male or female. So it depends, sometimes there's some glitches with that, but it is all student-reported.
Thank you. Just back to this, do we have the ability to look at our scores? We look at them versus Massachusetts or national. How about the dark districts, the communities that are similar to us?
Yes, so certainly, and we haven't really, I haven't drilled down. We could look at the dark districts and then find out their scores. I haven't looked at that through the DESE website. But we used to make those comparisons, we're trying to move away from the comparisons a little bit. There were some comparison charts within your packet, but we didn't publicize here. And I think a little bit is that intentional of trying to turn the pressure down. And again, when we look at other comparable communities, we're doing very, very well. But we didn't put in the slide deck this year as, it was intentional of, let's try and try and turn the temperature down around like, what's Westboro doing? What's Wachusett doing? What's Wellesley doing? What's Natick doing? And those things. But yeah, we certainly take a look at the results there. And I think, I want to say, if you look at your packet, it's probably, I think we're in the second in all those districts in terms of performance. So, I said it.
I think we have to underscore how these results, every year, we do very, very well. And I think it's the teaching, the quality of the teaching that our students, the education they're getting is the reason for that, and the fact that our students apply themselves and look at these tests as something significant to their future. But then we talk about the stress that goes along with, you know, SATs. I work with a really nice guy whose daughter is going off to his first one to college. And he's like, she's got to get her SAT scores up. And I'm like, it's one piece, you know? And I think we have to make sure students understand it's one piece of that whole application that's going to go out.
Yeah, if I could just comment on that, I agree with you. I think, and this, the admissions process is a little bit more, for me, and maybe you could talk a little bit about this too, it's not as clear as it's been in 10 years ago, 12 years ago. Again, an example is, we've had a student get into a really, really competitive Boston-based college, Boston College, and not get into UMass. So it depends on what you have to offer.
Yeah.
Do you play the oboe? Do you play the flute? Do you play a sport? Do you play, are you a singer? Do you row on the crew team? There's so many different variables that go in that fill out the profile of a college or university. There's no one set recipe to get into any college. I think students in New England are disadvantaged just because we have such a high concentration of fantastic schools, that a number of, everyone in the country seems to want to go to those schools. So the competition is stiffer for geographic region. As you know, students tend to travel about 2 hours away from home, on generally speaking. So we're in region, which is different.
Right.
I always say to parents, if you want merit money or travel out of region. But some people don't want to go to Ohio for college. I get it. But we've had kids that go away and had some success as well. So, there's no real recipe for it. I guess that's my, my advice to parents is there's...
No magic answer.
Yes, it's become increasingly difficult to predict where people are going to get accepted to.
I have a question around the testing days, moving into a school day on a Wednesday. So how does...
So how does that work when students have classes? How do we?
So we chose not to go to a school day testing.
Okay.
I think this is something that the college board is really pushing, which is why they're now calling the Saturday testing an optional test date.
Okay.
So it gives people the impression that the real test date is on the Wednesday. They're also, and it's interesting, they're also pushing for SAT days, some SAT days to be on, on a school testing day too. So they're pushing that piece. I've had calls from the college board saying, if you do your SAT, if you do your PSAT on the school day, we'll let you offer SATs to your upper-class students, to your seniors, on the same school day so that everybody's occupied with testing. So there's a lot of different, different methods that they're using. And the ACT is starting to jump on board with that as well. So they're in the spring looking for schools that will be willing to offer ACT testing during the school day.
Interesting that they're marketing that way.
Can I actually ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
What is their interest in doing that? I don't quite understand the motivation.
Their motivation, they'll tell you, is access and equity.
Which would be more people taking that test.
It's a billion-dollar non-often. I think they're, in my opinion, I think they're forcing their hand to school districts to offer this. My opinion in terms of operating a 2,000-person, almost 2,000-person high school is extremely, extremely disruptive to instruction in the daily operation. I'm not, I think there's many, my colleagues would have a similar opinion. I feel the college board's inserting themselves into using it as a lever to get more people to take that test.
Right.
Whether right or wrong, I don't know. I just, I, for me, it's made them old-school and feel they should be outside of the regular school day, that we have a lot to cover in our time. So spending three or four hours a day doing that, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm curious of their motivation behind it.
And I think it's also disappointing to hear about, you know, pushing to sign up for the AP test by 11:15.
Yes.
And are we having any students who are, have come for it financially, it's difficult, they don't have as much time to prepare?
Yes. The short answer is yes. And the, and the late fees, and cancellation fees are up to 50% of the cost of the test.
Oh, my goodness.
So we're talking upwards of $50 for a cancellation or a late order.
And that's just another disappointing, I mean, I don't know, again, from a marketing, you know, why, why are they doing this other than from a commercial kind of financial aspect?
I have asked that question.
Yeah.
Their response is, it was just from one person that I spoke with, it was the number that they chose to make sure that students would commit to taking that test so that they would not, if they, they would not decide to not take that test because then they would still be hit with that fee as well. So they didn't really have a really good number of why they chose $40 as the late testing fee.
And historically, our students, part of our syllabus is, the expectation is you take the test. If you're going to sign up for that course, you have the expectation of going to take our test. And our students and families have been outstanding with that. They've committed to that and they've done that. So we have never had a problem with that.
Is there any ability to provide funding for these students? Is there, if they're not able to provide, and then they have that huge fee if they don't?
For students who receive free and reduced lunch, they definitely, the state does definitely support, add some supporting, but we don't find that out until later in the spring.
Okay.
Till the state finds out how much money they have.
Right. And we've also supported through our student activities account, students who have had to, that can't pay that, that we've supported students there and we've worked out for payment plans to help figure out what works for their family. Things change. We've had students whose parents have lost jobs and can't afford that, and we don't want to exclude them from the test. So we've made accommodations to make sure they're able to take it. So, yeah, we've been flexible around that and been fortunate to be flexible around that.
Right. Thank you. Dr. Soria, any comments?
Well, I certainly want to thank Ms. Zidlman for the report and congratulate all the students and faculty and staff for the excellent results. I think as has been alluded to earlier, this is a snapshot. It's an important, it's a metric, it's an important metric in different ways. It's a metric that can be very confusing in terms of, you know, more schools not being test optional and, you know, being a parent for the first time of a student who will be heading off to college next year, seeing some of the colleges, marketing themselves as test optional and trying to get, you know, differentiate themselves that way is interesting to see all the different ways they're trying to attract interest from students and from families. I think that, you know, we have been working hard to try to be balanced about the kind of workload that we're expecting for students. I know, I think you mentioned this when you presented relative to the future plans, but our school counseling department, every year when kids are going to be signing up for their courses, you know, have the kids fill out essentially a timesheet, you know, if you're planning on taking these courses, if you're doing a sport, if you have a job, how many hours in the day, and really looking at that. And I know that does affect students and families' choices about what kind of course load they take and what's reasonable. That said, I mean, we still have challenges when it comes to that because there are different messages that are sent from different, and even Ms. Zidlman and I have discussed, different colleges send different messages about that. Some colleges send messages about they're taking a very holistic approach to admissions. Others are taking an approach saying, you better have X number of APs and you better have high test scores or you're not going to get in here. And so depending on what a family might be interested in or a student, they may feel more pressure than another student who may not be looking at that particular school. So it is, it's a, it's a difficult, tricky landscape at times, but bottom line is, to a large degree as well, you know, these do represent some really tremendous learning that's gone on for our students. And the bottom line is that's, we're in the business of kids learning. And, you know, this is one metric or some different metrics that we have for our high school kids. Ms. Clowder's going to talk about some different metrics, including your high school kids on MCAS, but across the whole district. And I think it's going to be just behoove us to continue to keep them in context, look at them for how we can continuously adjust in terms of how we can make sure kids are learning well and provide opportunities, of course, for our kids to be successful. And sometimes there's parts of the system that individually or even collectively we would like to change at some point or wish would change or don't like the way some of the testing is going on a national scale. But we have to balance that with, you know, if we need to make sure our students have opportunities to go in the direction they would like to go and try to counsel them in ways that help them to not overdo it or underdo it for kids who may be looking for certain opportunities that they would need to do certain things in order to get those opportunities that they could be capable of. So it's, we'll keep working towards improvement. And again, we're very proud and pleased with the work that's being done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll continue with testing report. Ms. Clowder, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, will provide an update on MCAS testing.
Thank you. Get this over here. So I appreciate your kind attention in advance. I've heard sometimes, you know, say at family parties that I like data trends a little bit more than it is helpful when socializing. And data by day is different from looking at data by night. And I am the second person to present you with a lot of numbers and graphs. So you have your shoes on, it's not cold and wet, but you'll be persevering along with me as we go through this and modeling resilience by looking at all this information. I've structured it with consideration to the fact that you have a lot of information in your report already. So I've tailored my talk accordingly and with our viewers at home in mind. I'll pause for questions at the end, but if you have something that you want to spend more time with, just signal and I'll slow down. I think the importance of this test is kind of something we need to consider in terms of looking at the importance of assessment in general. And I put the kind of data cycle up there to remind us that, you know, when you're assessing a student, you're evaluating their performance and their growth. And in the classroom, we have multiple ways of doing that, and you see them captured with such joy in some of those pictures. MCAS is a really efficient way to gather a lot of information about a lot of kids, but it has its limits. It tells us about, you know, one moment last spring, it's one snapshot, and, you know, like these, we look pretty good, the overall landscape, we take a good picture. And I appreciate also the investments that the DESE has made in sharing results in a more timely way and in more data-friendly way. We have more information than we've had before, which has allowed us to make some adjustments in response to what we see in terms of our data trends. But the big story here is that, you know, learning is the goal. And it's important for us to listen to what the trends are in our data, but also keep that in mind because, you know, our vision of the portrait of a Shrewsbury graduate talks about lots of domains, and some of them are really important but hard to measure. And so as we're celebrating our success on the one hand, we also need to keep in mind how we build a different and broader perspective about what student success looks like. So we are in the third year for grades three through eight of the Next Generation MCAS test. The Next Generation test was designed to calibrate the test degree of rigor across grades. So in the past, the legacy tests were developed independent of one another, and so comparing scores from one grade to another was somewhat difficult. We now have not only a baseline, but two years of data from grades three to eight. Last spring was the first year that grade 10 took the Next Generation test in both English Language Arts and Math. So it's a baseline data for grade 10, but we're moving towards a place where we're no longer talking about the legacy test for the most part. There are still a couple of places where there's some close confusers, but I'll make sure I talk to you about that. And we'll be looking at student performance through two lenses. We'll look at achievement scores, which talk about how each student's achieving relative to the state standards for that grade. And we'll be talking about growth scores, which is the state's attempt to answer the question, how well the student has grown in the past year as compared to students who'd had similar scores in prior tests. And so that's a little bit complicated to talk through. Massachusetts measures growth for individual students by looking at the change in their achievement on statewide assessments to that of their academic peers. So that requires looking at score histories. For that reason, grade three doesn't have a student growth percentile score. Grade four scores are based on grade three year. And for other grades, they're taking into account two years of score histories when they're making that assessment. The rate of change is expressed as a percentile, which represents how many students had greater or lesser improvement on the test as compared to the performance of the cohort of students with the same achievement score history. So for example, it tells us how a specific score for a grade six math test compares to the scores of students in the state who had the same scores in grades four and five in terms of the number of students who scored better or worse than that student as a percentile. At the same time, because scores vary widely, for students who score really well, like say a perfect score, those students tend to be really high achievers. So high achievers tend to have a high score history. If you missed one or two questions from one year to the next, it might have an outsized effect on your growth percentile, even though your achievement rate is relatively high. And so I think for that reason, it's important to look at a student in terms of an overall performance, and if their proficiency rating is high, they're generally okay. And the state has reports for parents that kind of talk a little bit about how growth is distinct from achievement and what that looks like. And their parent reports, I think, are a little bit more data-friendly in helping them compare, how does your student compare to other students within the district, neighboring districts, and also according to the state. So I'm going to segue into looking at science and technology engineering scores. This test is administered in grades five, eight, and 10. And for this year, grades five and eight took the Next Generation test for the first time in the subject. Grade 10 still took the legacy test. So when we look at our scores here, we'll note that there's a similar response, similar results for grades five and eight. And one of the things that was intriguing to me about that was that they specifically looked at the Next Generation test with the goal of calibrating the degree of rigor. And the results suggest to me that they're, they're close to achieving that goal, at least for this initial score report. From the limited number of questions that are released, one of the, one of the conjectures of our science department is that it seems still to be a heavy emphasis on content. I know it came before you earlier to talk about the science practices, and we're looking to see how well do our practices align with the assessment. That's still an open question that we're considering, but we're hoping to see in the future more emphasis on explaining interpreting models, which would be a better match for the kind of teaching and learning we want to see in the subject. So we can see that our scores for meeting and exceeding are relatively consistent across grade five and grade eight. We're fortunate that we have somebody that serves on the grade eight science staff and also on the MCAS Development Committee for the state. So I think we, we are going to see in the future the state's attempt to remedy some of the differences in terms of what they're talking about in science practice and, and science assessment. And it will be interesting to see how that manifests itself in our scores because we paid such attention to adjusting our teaching and learning to reflect more of the rigor that we're hoping in terms of practices and outcomes. The high school took the legacy test, and you can see those state results reflect pretty steady score in terms of past practice. This is the last year that they'll take the legacy test, so next year, I think they'll be piloting the new assessment. And then so we'll see a great comparison across grade five and grade eight and grade 10. But those results are very high in terms of, you know, students meeting advanced and proficient ratings and also as compared to the district overall. So English Language Arts. So when we look at grade three, we can see, we continued outperforming the state by a wide margin, and we do really well, as you see in your report, relative to other comparison districts. We compare our results to our geographic neighbors, and we also use DART district comparisons. DART stands for District Analysis and Review Tool. So the state gives us some comparison communities based on our demographics and our overall results. And in your report, you can see that grade three is really a point of pride. We have strong scores, and our scores last year were strong, but they rose in this year. And one of the things that I think it's really important to acknowledge is that our grade three scores tend to be attributed to our grade three teachers. And really, they reflect really good teaching and learning in kindergarten, first and second, as well as grade three. So we can see our students are achieving in reading at a high rate here, and that holds steady when they go to grade four. Seventy-six percent of our students are meeting or exceeding state benchmarks. And overall, English Language Arts results for students in grade four to five look really similar. In both grades, there are slightly fewer students scoring in the meeting exceeding categories than in 2018, but in terms of the number of students reaching proficiency benchmarks, we see gains over time. And students in our district score among the top five districts in the Assabit Valley. You can see that trend there for grade five. Scores for grade six in English Language Arts held steady with slightly more students receiving exceeding scores than last year. Again, our results show that Shrewsbury Public Schools is one of the highest performing districts when compared to others in the area, both geographically and demographically. When we look at grade seven, the rate of student performance meeting those benchmarks decreased slightly. And what's interesting to me when I look at this with trends in mind is that scores for this grade span remain lower across the state and lower at this grade level in Shrewsbury when compared to other grade levels. However, the number of students in grade eight that are meeting proficiency benchmarks continues to rise. So it suggests to me that the dip in grade seven is remedied as students progress to the next grade. But there's something about those results at grade seven that make me wonder about the calibration of the Next Gen test and also, I think, warrant some further study in terms of our own, our own results. So last spring, students in grade 10 took the English Language Arts new test for the first time. And what's important to remember is that you really can't compare legacy results to Next Gen results. And so for this reason, we have a kind of a new baseline for high school. And so for people who are watching at home and you see that 79 number, that's going to seem like a real dip. But again, the tests are totally different. And so this is... But again, the tests are totally different, and so this is a new baseline for us. Very few districts posted higher English Language Arts scores on the legacy test than Shrewsbury High School, and it will be really interesting to see patterns of performance emerging over time as the new test becomes standard for this grade. So we talked about how we'd look at two lenses for performance. One was achievement and one was growth. You'll remember that the Department of Education defines good growth in the 40 to 60 percentile range. So this chart shows high achievement and high growth data together. Those circles represent our schools, with the bigger circles representing schools with the biggest populations. And so you can see the cluster of high growth and then the individual school results below there. Again, we're in the right quadrant. We'd like to move closer to the right, but I think we're in a good spot. And when we look at our data certainly compared to other districts, not even in Massachusetts, but nationally, we have a real cause for celebration there. This looks at student growth percentiles across the grade. That green band represents where we want those scores to be. You can see we have higher rates of growth in grades four, eight, and 10. And again, that's an area where, you know, we have room to improve in grades five and seven. Also, we need to look at the performance of subgroups and what their growth rates look So when we look at the performance of students in the high needs subgroup, that includes students with disabilities and students with language needs put together. If we look at the rate of growth for our high needs students versus all students, we see that the rate of growth is pretty similar, which I think is heartening. The difficulty is if the achievement scores are different, then students in subgroups need to make more growth in order to eventually close that achievement opportunity gap in proficiency. And so although we can feel really good about the rate of growth being similar, we need to look at what that impact over time is. If they're holding steady, we're still going to see that gap in performance.
Can I just restate maybe what you said and make sure I understand what you're saying?
Sure.
So our higher need students, which is, how is that defined in this context?
They take all of our subgroups.
All of it, okay. So our higher need students and all of our students are seeing similar growth patterns, but our higher need students are starting at a lower level, so while they're growing at similar rates, we can see that that gap isn't particularly closing or really moving per this test in this way.
Yeah, which is why we see that the rates of growth are similar, but that still is a real difference in terms of the overall ratings for proficiency. And again, this is not a Shrewsbury phenomenon.
Right, no, absolutely.
This is a phenomenon that we see across the state, and one of the things we're really engaged in is thinking about how do our models of instruction, like co-teaching, help us to accelerate growth with groups and subgroups? There are good reasons that students with disabilities might start off with lower levels of proficiency, and similar students who are learning a new language are going to not perform as well on an English Language Arts test. But what we hope is that with focused intervention and consistent support, we're seeing that gap close. And so one of the things that is a real hallmark of ed reform and using the MCAS is to draw attention to these patterns of discrepant performance over time and to help us really pay attention to not just how are all of our students doing, but how are each different group of students performing? And that informs some of our work in terms of how we support students, how we change the curriculum for specific groups, and how we organize teaching and learning in general. How can we leverage what are good practices in some schools that the gaps seem to be That's a great question, though, Lindsay. So I'm going to turn to math. Overall, in math, students in grade three, more students in grade three met the benchmark than last year. Again, as with English Language Arts, we have strong results overall. Our scores are among the highest in our area, and we compare really well to students demographically from DART districts as well. Similarly, grade four results are really strong, with 79% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations. More students at grade four achieved the rating of exceeding, which is the highest proficiency rating. And our students consistently achieve higher scores than most children in the state. So one of the things I wonder about is how helpful it is to have the state comparison. But I think, you know, as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education talks about, you know, it's important to be looking at trends over time, but also, and that's a helpful comparison, but also it's important not to worry too much about one difference. And this is a snapshot, and the test is evolving. So I go back and forth about whether it's helpful to have that as a point of comparison, but is the state adjustments are making in terms of the test changing, I think it's a helpful metric to look at. Okay, for grade seven, if we're low, is the state low too? And so I'm always thinking a little bit about that comparison. When we look at grade five, 73% of our students met or exceeded the grade level benchmark, which shows a slight increase from last year. Grade six scores are really similar, with more students achieving at the highest level this year than last year. In your report, you probably noticed that our numbers for grade six compare well with scores from other districts in Assabit Valley. And one of the things I noticed when I looked at the district comparatives is that students in DART districts tend to just score higher overall. So this is an area where I'll be looking for further study along with grade seven. Math scores for grade seven remain pretty consistent, with more students scoring in the exceeding range. Although results for this grade span, like English Language Arts, are lower overall, our scores are still significantly higher than the state average. But again, our achievement data for this grade is really different than other DART districts. Only two of the DART districts scored lower than we did, and that's a place that just seems to me, I want to really ponder why that result has happened. When we look to the following year, as with English Language Arts, we see that the scores increase. They are overall slightly declined from last year, but again, when we look at the state average here, we can see a noticeable difference between the number of students on average meeting or exceeding the state benchmark from the state overall versus Shrewsbury. So part of me wonders about, you know, how do we see this trend playing out over time and whether we need to look specifically at kind of the middle grade span and the number of transitions and/or how well the math program transitions from one grade to another? As you recall, math is organized so that grade five is like our K4, using Math in Focus, and then we switch to a different curriculum for grade six to eight. And so that's one of the things that Melissa McCann, who is the math coordinator for that level, has kind of raised as an area for further study. So again, in grade 10, students took the next generation test for the first time, both in English Language Arts and in math. So our scores for grade 10 in math are next gen scores for the first time, so they're a baseline for us for the high school level. Eighty percent of our students met or exceeded the benchmark for math in grade 10. And the highest rates of growth for math really are grades four, eight, and 10. When we look at subgroup performance data, so again, this is the larger bubbles representing our larger schools. You can see the clusters in the right quadrant for the most part, and the specific school results below. And similarly, when we look at the expected rate of growth, all of our grades are within that range, with some room for improvement at some of the middle school level. And we see gaps playing out in a similar way in math. This is the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. The high needs subgroup being in yellow and all students in Shrewsbury being dark blue. We see that same change in terms of, or the same difference, I'm sorry, in terms of achievement scores, but yet similar growth scores. So this suggests to me that we need to look more carefully at intervention for students that were in our subgroups and see, do we have some subgroups that are achieving at higher rates, and what are we doing to support those students that might be effectively leveraged with other groups? The other thing that I think is really important to talk about is how we use this data. The state has given us a number of tools that we can leverage to look at the results in terms of how it impacts our curriculum decisions, in terms of whether there are specific items or kinds of questions that we need to target more specifically. This is, for example, an item analysis report, and you can see which items, you know, numbers nine and 18 are just significantly lower. We might look at that and think, okay, well, that reflects a question about content that we don't teach. And maybe we purposely made a decision to de-emphasize that in favor of focusing more on another area. If there's one or two questions, that may or may not be a big concern. Sometimes those questions have wording or phrasing that you think, okay, I understand why kids miss that. Another way we look at it is to see, you know, where are there places where the state has outperformed us? So if we look at this here, you can see in that middle range, in terms of parts of speech, we really didn't do as well there. We wouldn't quibble that knowing parts of speech is important, and so we might really think about, how is it that we can make sure we're targeting that at a specific grade level so that we are monitoring that over time? And then this is fuel for teams. Teams are hungry for data, and one of the struggles at the elementary level is that, you know, when you receive your data, sometimes your kids are no longer with you. So you're looking at the data from last year's kids to think about how to impact the kids in front of you. But for the most part, the conversation about student performance really fuels our discussions about best practice. It also fosters collaboration across levels, specifically at the elementary level, because you've got so many points of comparison across schools. And also, it helps us have conversations about expectations, both for subgroups and for all students, in terms of some of those learning targets that we have. But by and large, I think it's an opportunity for us to celebrate our educators who work really hard to empower our students and who are of the mindset that we are continually improving. And I think trying to think more broadly about student success while at the same time thinking really carefully about what our rates of student achievement and growth say about our current efforts. And so I wanted to end with a note of appreciation to our teachers before I segued into answering some of the questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Jason?
Great report. Thank you for obviously taking us through a significant level of detail in a very efficient way. Overall, I think that these scores paint a very positive picture of our district and the work that our educators are doing and what our students are achieving and how they're growing. So I just want to start by saying I think that this is a very, very positive picture of Shrewsbury Public Schools. I do want to ask about that seventh grade dip that you had alluded to.
Yeah.
Was a little bit surprising to me as well, and what was particularly surprising was that it seemed to persist across subject matter.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, do we think it is, you mentioned curriculum alignment potentially being it, but across different, could it also be that it's a time of transition for our students?
Yes.
Is it something that we're seeing across the state that seventh graders are underperforming sixth and eighth grade? That just struck me as surprising.
We're a little bit lower than what we'd expect to see in the other comparison districts, so I think part of it has to do with the transition. We have an unusual middle school setup. Remember when we were doing the Beal project, we were looking at grade spans, and we purposely elected to make Beal K4 so that we would minimize the number of transitions overall, because the research suggests that when you have a transition, you can expect a dip in student scores. So part of me is wondering, does it have to do with the transition itself and students just acclimating to new expectations? Does it have to do with the curriculum and how one grade in one level speaks to another? Because it does persist across subject areas. It also raises questions for me about, you know, did the state achieve its goal in the grade seven test in terms of the calibration piece? So I think, you know, those are all avenues that we'll explore. I think one of the things that I've learned in having data conversations with team is to say, what are all the reasons that this could be true? Okay, now if it was this, what would we expect to see as other indicators? Okay, let's go look for those. If it was this, what would we expect to see? So when you talked about the dip being across both subject areas, I think, yeah, there's something about that that warrants study beyond one specific subject area, but it's also, we have limited data, so I don't want to go up the ladder of inference and jump to conclusions either. I really want to have more conversations about those other assessments that we have of student progress, and do they show the same impact?
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else?
So a lot of interesting stuff here, and between your report and the one we just heard before, you were confronting all these questions about tests, and I think we all breathe a sigh of relief to know that if somebody's giving a test, we're going to do well on it. But the, you know, the other piece of this is how well do these tests do at measuring our students' intelligence or mastery or whatever they're reporting to do? And we look at these scores and, you know, we look at differences between districts or the like and say, we're a little higher here, a little lower there. There are times where you can have statistically significant differences that'll run through the computer and say, this is a significant difference, yet from a point of view of knowledge, from a point of view of, you know, what really matters, it may be just noise. It may, you know, it's like saying that one person's temp is 98.6 and somebody else's temp is 98.3.
It's a great analogy, yeah.
And so I wonder if there's any thinking along those lines as to whether, in addition to providing a score, you'd have like a band of saying, this is, you know, essentially the same as this range.
I think they used to have kind of an error band in terms of looking at that, so that when they were setting kind of benchmarks, you had a sense about, so this score here just makes the cutoff for this proficiency level, but if it's one point off, you wouldn't necessarily worry about a kid who was one point away from the line between partially meeting expectations and meeting expectations. So I think, you know, you're thinking in similar lines to how they were sharing grade level bands in the past. I think that's why I started by thinking really purposefully about, this is a snapshot of one moment in time in a district where, I hope, we have lots of formative assessment and lots of other points of comparison for student progress to talk about, because I think, you know, some kids could have had a terrible day. I mean, Todd was talking about the AP scores. I vividly remember, will probably never forget, that I had a stomach flu when I was taking the AP history exam, and that poor proctor had to walk me back and forth to the bathroom three times, but I was not leaving that exam until I was finished. And I was amazed that I scored well on that exam because I was feeling so lousy. And I think that that kind of thing plays out for students, too. We test kids a lot, so I think if you have a low score in one grade, chances are in another grade, you'll see a different level of performance if it was something that was a blip like that. But I do think it's interesting to think about, not only how do we put this in context for overall performance, but also how do we start to think about measuring some of the things that we think are important beyond this kind of metric of success? Because it is reassuring to know that we're doing well, especially when compared to DART districts. But I worry about so much emphasis on this one form of assessment without having conversations about how we assess the things that are also really important, because when teachers hear this, I hope they hear they've done a really good job, but I also hope they hear that there are other things that are really important that we need them to focus time and energy on, as opposed to thinking about, how do we gain three more? Already doing very well.
Another question, along the same line of thought, is it seems that what I'm learning from my time on the school committee is there's a trend towards sort of building an achievement portfolio that perhaps would de-emphasize the machine-tested exams. But we also are administering a number of different exams that are essentially similar formats, whether it's testing in class or the MCAS or the SATs.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering what the correlation is between performance on those tests given by different agencies, whether it's the district or the state or the SAT people. Have we looked at that at all, or has anybody?
I haven't yet looked at that, but I think we probably could. It would be a matter of taking Todd's information with na and putting, and sitting down with Maureen and putting the two pieces together. We would certainly be able to look up individual students. I don't know how easy it would be to get the systems to talk to each other, but we could probably do that. I think the other piece is that our educators are also using this test for ways that it wasn't necessarily designed, because they're trying to find answers to the questions that they have. So on Parent Conference Day, when the high school was having professional development, for example, I was sitting with the math department, and they were specific- for example, I was sitting with the math department, and they were specifically looking at problems from content strands that they knew that they had not emphasized in their math program, because they wanted to see if they could get information about how well our students are solving novel problems. And I thought, that's really great work to do. So if a student hasn't had a content area, can they still persevere and solve that problem well? Versus, we're really trying to prep them better for this test next time, and we're trying to pull away from that to see, it's a good thing that they're encountering a novel problem, and how do they do? So I think, even if it's designed for a certain purpose, our educators are innovative, and they're finding new ways to use the information, and I think that's great.
Thanks.
One of the things that I think about as a parent with, who got some of these reports recently, and was trying to sort of understand them and go through them, a couple of things come to mind. One, I appreciate that at parent-teacher conferences, one of my teachers used this data to have a conversation about sort of aptitude versus applying oneself, and talk about the growth rate and what that maybe meant or did not mean, and so that was wonderful to see it kind of helping parents figure this out. The reports do include something like the error bar that you were talking about, not for, is the test actually testing the thing it purports to test, which I don't think they would probably put in their, their results, but in terms of if your child were to take this multiple times, there's a, there is a range in there that they put around their score to give you a sense of like, and I had one child who was right near the line, and like, does this matter or not? And it's a little bit helpful, maybe, not really so much solving the problem. What I continue to find interesting is that my perception certainly is that as a district, we try to de-emphasize the stress about this test, and yet it, it persists. And so, I have a child who does not get anxious about much of anything for school, sometimes to my great chagrin, and yet for the MCAS, it's like, I have to have breakfast. Well, you have breakfast every day, but I have to have breakfast today. And has like, we talk about it in a different way. And so, so I find that interesting, and, and in a, in a school culture and climate that's sort of trying to turn the dial down, yet is it everybody else in society? Is it maybe that teachers are saying something a little different than what our district is sort of putting out there, because they feel like this is an assessment of them in another way? And I don't, I'm not looking for like an answer to that, but I just
Yeah.
Sort of surprised that, that it doesn't, it doesn't always jive with conversations that I have with people here in this room about what we're sort of saying we should use this for, and yet we have some little people in our district at the elementary level who are feeling a surprising and unfortunate level of anxiety about a test that I keep saying, try hard, and it really doesn't matter, but try hard, you know? Do the thing you would do every day when you go to school. So I don't know what we do about that.
I think, I think that your message is really important and powerful, because I think we keep talking about, you know, the important piece is effort. Effort is a much better indicator of overall achievement, you know, progression than, than anything else. And I think smart is something that you get, is a message that's important. I don't think our teachers are sending different messages from that. I think actually they're trying to get kids to slow down a little bit. But part of it is, I was surprised, it resonates for me, your story, at the kids that would be stressed that I wouldn't predict, and I liken it to being like stopped for traffic, you know, if you're speeding. And I, I know I haven't done anything terrible, but I'm convinced when I see the blue lights that it like, panic, you know? I suddenly can't find where my registration is, I know exactly where it is, but the blue light seems to just do that to me. And I think the script for teachers is really specific. They have to read through this whole list of what you can and cannot do. They're told in their training that they can't vary from the script. It's really important. And so they use a voice that's not like their everyday teacher voice. It's more like, you know, the blue light and the cop approaching your window. And I think that in itself for kids is a real scary experience. It signals, this is a little different. This isn't my normal kind of assessment experience, or even a test at a grade level. So part of it is, they're going to face the test in other years, and so kids would say, I hate this test. You might hate it, and that's okay, but you're also going to face it over and over again. So this is a good opportunity to figure out how you're going to like something that you really don't like. Because it's not going to go away just because you don't like the experience.
Right.
So how can we use it to show what you do know? And, you know, some years I was more successful in talking to kids than others. But I think, you know, one of the things that strikes me is by the time kids exit, you know, overall, it is a really good success story.
Absolutely.
And I think we should celebrate that for kids.
And I think it's, it's another benchmark. It's a measure of the quality of education. In Shrewsbury, we do very well. We do need to have measurements. We do need to be accountable for the education we provide. Definitely, I think it's, it's standardized testing causes anxiety. Some students do better than others, just in testing, and others just standardized testing, no matter how smart they are, it's just not something that they do well on. I like when you talk to, you know, we've heard in the past, teaching to the test. Oh, the teachers are just teaching to MCAS for grade scores. We know that's not true. I like how you talk about, well, maybe if we haven't had that content mastered, but they're able to use critical thinking and other skills to, to do well, because that we're doing things that are right and educating students. So I, I think it's, it's another snapshot of how we do. Is it everything we do? No. There's a lot that goes into this, and I was talking to Dr. Sawyer earlier today, and there's so much involved in analyzing these results, and what does this piece mean? And I think we could, you could dive so far into that, but the bottom line is, we do very well. And that's, that's, again, to the, the education that the teachers are providing. And thank you to you as well, because you do such a great job of distilling it for us, and for anybody watching, to very understandable components. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And thanks to Donna Manzoli and Beth McCollum, who are my number checkers when I have all those graphs, and they start to swim in front of me, and I think, okay, I need you to take a random piece of paper and check that those numbers are correct. Their eyes really save me as I'm putting those graphs together, so I appreciate that.
And the other thing, in our report, you, you also talked about, it helps look for bright spots. So we're not just looking at, you know, where we can do better, we're also looking at where we do really well, and what is the outcome of doing well. So I think we have to highlight, it isn't what we do incorrect, or what we're missing, it's like, this is what we really do well. So that is another, people have to look at when their students get those test results. These are good things.
Definitely. And I think those, that's the theme that really flavors the conversations at the team level, is, you know, you don't have to be bad to get better. How can we learn from this? And, you know, I, I love it when teachers come, and they're like, okay, this is me, but I'm looking at the grade, and I'm knowing somebody's doing much better than I am. What are you doing that helps your kids understand fractions? And I think that's what it's really all about.
Right, those communication discussions.
Not having that privatization of practice, and really thinking about it as an opportunity to get better, both instructionally and curriculum-wise.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Just echo what a high-quality report, the report in the school committee packet is extremely detailed, and I think was done in a way that made it understandable. And again, thank you for summarizing and synthesizing the information for the committee and for those watching. Again, something we should be very proud of as a school district, with the caveat that it's a snapshot, and it's one piece of, of information that we can use in a variety of ways. Obviously, we can look at individual students, and we can also look at cohorts of kids. We can look at disaggregating the data in terms of kids, and I think that we, you know, part of our strategic work, and over the next couple of years, is going to be looking at, you know, we have some very purposeful work to do around, how do our students who have different levels of need, and how do we help them accelerate their, their performance academically, whether it's measured by this or other measures that we think are important? And that's our responsibility as a school district. But I think, again, it's, it's a signal that we have very strong teaching and learning in our, in our schools, but it's not the end-all, be-all either. So I think it's both of those pieces. But as, as you pointed out in your, your last slide, I mean, this is really about the quality of teaching, what our teachers bring to the table, the support our families provide to our kids. Because, you know, one of the things, of course, that's frustrating, but a reality, is it's really hard to isolate variables. So, you know, the, from the time parents were reading to their kids long before they ever came to our schools, made a difference in these test scores. We know that there's those elements as well, and there's elements of value that we add as a school district. So kudos, but again, excellent job by Mrs. Clowder with the report, and we should feel good about where we're at, and we'll utilize the data in appropriate ways to try to get better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we will have Mr. Collins give us a report on student activity accounts. In 2018, we had an external audit that was focused on secondary schools. There were audit, auditors made recommendations, and Mr. Collins will give us an update on implementation of these recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. As you mentioned, the district did have an external audit back in June of 2018, that is statutory requirement. Also, on an annual basis, I meet with the building, each of the building principals and their school secretaries in review on those intervening two years, my own internal review. So student activity accounts, just for context, of course, are funds that parents pay for school-based field trips, activities, clubs, class dues. Also in that category would be some evening student productions, like musical performances where there's ticket sales and the like. The vast, vast majority of our activity is at the middle school and high school levels. There's basically the elementary schools, most of the activity is just related to field trips. So we did have external auditor come. I presented those audit reports to you, and their recommendations for improvement. This is an area where, in the past, in other school districts, because there's, the funds are sometimes cash-based, and flow through multiple hands, that's been a problematic area for other school districts, not our school district, but other school districts. And so, I pay particularly close attention to this, this area, even though it's a relatively small dollar kind of volume for, for the district. So their recommendations, I think, fell into basically, I'd summarize into four categories. I won't go through each one of these itemized that are in your report. You have each of the recommendations that were offered by the auditors, and then the corrective action that's been implemented. But in general, I'd say the four categories were some improvement on some backup documentation for either receipts or expenditures, the category of improving upon accountability for musical performance, theater performance receipts. The third category would be separation of some types of receipts that were coming in are really not appropriate to go into this particular fund, but rather should be a, in a separate revolving fund with those monies coming up to the business office. And then finally, some housekeeping, basically at the high school, where there is just a large, large number of different sub-accounts, and over time, where some clubs get started and have some interest, and then wane over a period of time, and there might be some residual very small dollars in those accounts, but just kind of hang there, that they recommended some housekeeping, if you will, consolidation into a more general account. So I did meet with the middle school principals, and the music director, and the teachers that are primarily involved in the evening theater performances. A form has been instituted to account for each evening's ticket sales, and accountability of cash for those ticket sales, much like we do for gate receipts at athletic events. In fact, Mr. Costa came to the high school meeting, just as an added resource to provide some assistance as well. So that's been implemented. As well as, we bought, we did buy some additional drop safes for the middle schools and the high schools, so that there was after-hours evening access for better safekeeping of funds, when principals' offices were not open. And then, the high school certainly addressed the housekeeping issues, and will continue to do so, in terms of consolidation of dormant accounts, and making sure that when we have graduating classes, that if they have residual funds on account, so the senior class, after all of their senior activities are done, if there's funding still in that account, those monies belong to that class. We're basically just a fiscal agent in this whole operation here. And those funds are turned over to the class president and class treasurer, two people, so that they can create their own bank account, it's out of our student activity account, and then, you know, they might go off and do reunions later, or whatever they might do. So I think that the corrective action meetings that were held, some of these things were in, more in the realm of training, and reminding of staff about particular differences, and just one, one difference, one item I would further remark on is, for example, when we have instances, which is great, where parents say, I want to donate some funding for a particular student activity at a school. And then we have parents who say, I just want to make a donation to the school. I don't care, you know, really what it's used for. Well, those are two types of, statutorily, two types of different receipts. One gets placed into the student activity account to be used specifically for supporting that student activity, and then just a general donation to the school has to be brought up to the business office, and we place it into a school gift account to be used by the school principal for whatever educational purpose they deem necessary in the future. So it's those kind of nuances, if you will, in further training, and talking about, talking through those situations with the principals and the school secretaries, who really play the primary role, a primary role in this, in this activity. So that's what I have for you. This was, again, kind of an interim follow-up report to ensure the school committee that these items were being addressed, and that corrective action plans were in place. And I feel confident that, that has been done, and this is, again, an area that requires annual monitoring, and I'll continue to do that until we have our next external audit.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? No, pretty straightforward? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
No, just appreciate, yes. Appreciate Mr. Collins' continued diligence with this, and the technical support he provides to the schools, and that these are in very good order, and a lot of these things are relatively minor, nuanced kinds of things that, but again, we'll get them squared away as we can, because we need to be good stewards of these funds.
Okay. Next, we will have a report, fiscal year 2020 budget update.
Okay. So I'm here tonight to also provide, again, a status update on the current fiscal year budget, which stands at just over sixty-six point three million dollars. It was a three point three seven percent annual increase over the last fiscal year. We have a summary report. This is a high-level report in terms of that sixty-six million dollars broken out into nineteen different categories. The A categories on the far left are salary-related categories, and we've got some transportation categories, some tuition, and those are the B categories. C categories are tuitions, and then D categories are equipment supplies, discretionary types So overall, at this particular point in the year, this is as of October 31st, we had expended just over fifteen point five million dollars, or about twenty-four percent of our annual budget. We had encumbered another forty-seven point five million dollars, or seventy-two percent, and kind of have unencumbered remaining funds of just about five percent. At this particular point in the year, I've done forecasting relative to all of our salary accounts, and salary accounts make up about eighty-five percent of our overall budget plan. So that's, you know, the largest piece of the pie, and of course, we go through individual by individual named people for budgeting purpose when we develop our budget. We don't just take salary accounts and apply some COLA or something like that. We actually, every single year, will look at our staff rosters by category and project out where they're going to be in the following year. We take into account the known personnel changes that we do know about. We take into account the known personnel changes that we do know about, especially retirements, if people are going to retire for the following year. We'll take that into account and adjust our budgets as we do with any other kind of known personnel activity. But even with that, there's still a large amount of personal activity that we don't know about by the time the budget is baked and then we open up the new school year. So at this particular point, I am making a projection that we will be at the June 30th, at the end of the year, in summary, that we'll expend about $65.7 million of our total budget and have a modest surplus of just over $600,000 or just about 1% variance to the positive. Some of those categories where the variances are, you can see with salaries, we've got some small positive changes in the Unit A or teacher category, again, due to personnel changes. And also with our instructional aid category, A3, there's a higher level of turnover there. And when there is turnover, sometimes there's positions that are left vacant for some periods of time that would add to a surplus as well. With respect to the secretaries, A4, and other non-represented staff, we did have one position actually works directly for me, the district courier, that we had budgeted as full-time and there was a retirement. And we ended up reshaping that a bit and backfilling it with a halftime position instead. So we've got some surplus there. Some categories where we have, we're looking at budget overages would be so-called other wages, which includes our summer school special education program and then all of our stipends for extra duty contracts for club advisors. And now the summer program is over and we did run over budget on our instructional aids in particular. So I'm looking at projected year-end deficit there, just about 4% or $34,000. Employee benefits included in there is a, some funding for year-end teacher retirements and a benefit for selling back sick leave if they have it. And we don't yet have a roster of folks who will be retiring, but there is a December 1 deadline and we do, we hold some sessions where we actually, in this room, that chart is one of the charts we used to talk to folks about, we're looking at retirement maybe in the next few years. But we had a large number of people show up over a two-day period, actually the largest group ever. And it was not just teachers, but paraprofessionals, a couple cafeteria workers, secretaries. So I'm thinking that we're going to probably be running over budget on the sick leave sellback benefit and be a bit over budget there. Special education transportation, we're looking at overage there about projecting $193,000 or 27%, which is a large percentage. We're looking at some circumstances there where more students than projected and some of these things, like even one student who, we typically run our service through the Aspen Collaborative, they do joint purchasing for us. And so all of our students who are placed in special education out of district placements, who go all schools, private schools all across the state, from Southborough to Boston to Newton, we're in this shared van service so that we can be as cost-efficient as possible. And the collaborative runs that program for us and you're going to hear a report just after this about kind of an update on the educational collaborative. But we have, we had a student in there and it was ride-sharing and when you share the costs, say you put four students in a van and there's this particular route cost for that van to run from this area to Newton and back twice a day, well, you basically share that route cost across the number of students, the number of districts. And just as one example, this is just one example, it's not the sole reason why we're running over here, but we had one student who was in a shared van service and then for the purposes of that student's disability, needed to be placed in their own dedicated vehicle with a monitor onboard as well. And so that service on an annual basis, just for that one student, is going to be just over $62,000 this year, just for transportation. So those are the types of things that, you know, you can't always forecast to that level of specificity. Special education tuitions, on the other hand, we're running, I'm projecting positively that we would be positive variance of about $240,000 or 18%. There's still plenty of the year, school year to go and I know that we will have more placements and have factored those in in terms of this projection, the number there. Vocational tuitions, we are definitely going to be over budget. We budgeted for 97 students in grades nine through 12 to go to Aspen Valley Technical High School and we have enrollment of 103, so we're over by six students there. So all in all, that's the summary, a little bit more detail by category, but the current year budget is in solid shape and I'm happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question on the, you said the summer special ed.
Yes.
The instructional aids cost was higher than anticipated. Is that due to the fact when we're developing the budget, the estimate of how many we need? More students needed that service once the summer started?
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, all those summer placements aren't really finalized until the springtime, late springtime and budget is more than baked, it's being served.
Right, 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 right. So it's still unknown, so like you said, you know, a $62,000 bus increase is, these are these unknowns that we would not anticipate. I mean, we're certainly adding into our analysis of needs going forward, but sometimes there are things we just can't anticipate.
Exactly. In the summer special education program, we're, you know, we're budgeting on a very much a macro basis in terms of total cost categories for groups of labor and looking at past year trends and talking about the upcoming school year and where things are looking. But all those individual student placements, again, aren't really done until later in the summertime.
Right, right, thank you.
Excuse me, springtime.
Dr. Sauer, any comments or questions?
No, I thank Mr. Collins, you know, he does excellent work with his team to be able to have numbers that we can use to forecast. It helps give us some peace of mind that we're in a good position overall for the fiscal year. Obviously, we look at each individual category and we'll keep monitoring places where we have overages and places where we have, we're running in the black. We hope that will continue and obviously, we try to be very prudent about as needs arise, you know, spending dollars, obviously dollars that are in the budget and we know we have for certain purposes, that's the point. If there's something beyond that, you know, we try to be very judicious about where we invest any dollars that, you know, may be on the edge or as we get closer to spending out categories. But we're in solid fiscal shape right now, that's a good news story and we're very pleased with that.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Sauer will give us a report on the Aspen Valley Collaborative.
Thank you. And as the committee knows, but for those watching, four times a year, we're required to make a report in public session relative to our membership in the collaborative. Kathy Cummins is the executive director, provided an update at the end of October that's in your packet, a variety of helpful links that are in there, reminded the committee of the new collaborative law that was signed back in January of this year, which improved upon, there was a chapter 43, which was put in place in 2012 in response to a very significant financial scandal at a collaborative in another part of the state where there had just been very loose oversight by, of the administration of that collaborative and it resulted in some embezzlement. The law, it was a good reform. There were some parts of it that were put into place who were a little bit clunky, one of them, example, that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was going to have an appointee to each one of the collaborative boards across the state, that just proved to be really undoable for the department in terms of their own manpower. They removed that, it really wasn't effective or possible. There's some other things that are nice that our collaborative will be looking at, the possibility in the future of perhaps serving adults who are beyond age 22, collaborative is dead, you know, by law can serve students up to age 22 with special education needs. But, and that's something that, you know, and whether Aspen pursues that or not, I don't know in the future, but we know that it is a real concern of families that when their, the public education eligibility runs out, when a student turns 22, has significant special needs to move into other options that the state provides and sometimes it's a tricky pathway for families to, so there's certainly more program that's needed across the state. In terms of the work that collaborative does, Mr. Collins just mentioned the fact that the collaborative transportation is a huge cost savings for us as a district and the member districts. There's some other shared purchasing for supplies and even for some commodities for baked goods, for example, things for cafeteria. So there's ways that purchasing power plays into this. Also, alternative programs for special education students who are what you call low incidence, it'd be very difficult and very cost ineffective for an individual district to provide a full-blown program for a very small number of students this way by pooling resources and having the collaborative provide some of these services. It provides better services as well in a more cost-effective manner. And then finally, you know, I would indicate that the benefits that are different roles, whether that's Ms. Cloutter, Mr. Collins, myself, you know, they do have job-alike groups that meet to talk about. And we're very fortunate to be in, obviously, in a state that once again, and most recently on the National Assessment of Education Progress ranked number one in grades four and eight for like the 10th year in a row or something like that. We know Massachusetts is known as probably the strongest state in the nation for public education. But central Massachusetts is a particularly strong area, region of the state when it comes to successful school districts. And so I know we learn from our counterparts in other local districts or members of the collaborative and that's certainly a benefit to our district as well around what good practice looks like and how we can spread that. And so with that, this is, there's information there, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has. You know, one thing that the, I'm going to talk to both priorities and challenges for the year for the collaborative. Some of it is making some capital repairs to the building that we lease in Marlboro for Orchard Street Academy, which is an alternative program for students with some behavioral challenges. Also, the fact that we feel, I do feel, obviously, a measure of guilt that we are not going to be partnering with the collaborative any longer at the high school for the space that they've been leasing for us for the past eight years for the Evolution Program. That said, I know that the collaborative leadership is looking to put that program in more of a situation that may be more community-based for students who are that age and working on life skills and community and work skills. But finding a home for Evolution next year, obviously, is something that will be important for the collaborative to do. And you see, there's many other things that, it's a high-functioning organization and provides a lot of value to the member districts, including us. So if any members have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments? Great, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our minutes from our meeting on October 30th, 2019. Are there any changes, corrections? There being none, they can be marked as accepted as distributed. If there's nothing further to come before us this evening, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
I'll move. Second.
Move second and a roll call vote is required. Dr. McKee, Mr. Pallett.
Aye.
Ms. Effron, myself. Aye.